Section which you can see on the bottom picture here. So that has an earthen ditch. So when we have water events, it sheets off the road and it makes its way into that earthen ditch and then into a natural waterway that way. So we're looking at what's the best fit for the corridor. As we add pedestrian facilities, we look at the existing condition out here. We feel that south of 19, the best fit will be converting it to an urban section. Adding curb and gutter that really reduces our footprint when we add in that pedestrian facility. And helps preserve the surrounding wetlands through there. So when we do upgrade that southern section to the existing northern section, how does that? How does that fit in with the existing storm sewer? What storm sewer updates and maintenance needs to happen along with that? So as a county, we do public engagement throughout all of our projects. Traditionally, we would do a face to face event in the afternoon. Where committee members can come in and actually meet us in person and we lay out maps and we can have very intimate conversations about goals and objectives and impacts that the project's going to have. Due to COVID, we are unable to have those type of engagement opportunities, though we feel they are very important. And as soon as it's safe to do so, we will do some face to face engagement. But right now, this project has only done online engagement and the next engagement that's upcoming in mid February is also going to be an online engagement. So with online engagement, we've had a lot of success with this. So what we do is we set up a website. We have a video to introduce everyone to the project. We have a storyboard that walks you through the different aspects of the project. And then we have a comment section, either an interactive map or a survey that residents and the public can come in and comment on. So our last engagement last summer, we had over 350 views, meaning original clicks on the people visiting our site. And then we had, we got a lot of feedback, which is great. So we're hoping to get the same involvement countywide. We've been seeing a lot of participation with our online involvement. We're getting a lot more comments than we traditionally would. So moving forward, I think we're still going to have some kind of online engagement in addition to the more traditional engagement that we traditionally do. So for example, one of the things that we've altered is our mailing. So we mail out notices before we would want to. The sweet spot is usually three weeks prior to that in-person engagement to get on people's schedules and to program that in to their schedule to come and meet us. Where now we've adjusted that where we actually mail them out a day or two before the website goes up. So when they get it in the mail, it's already active. It's already live. They can go over there that day and check out our project and comment. So I think that's part of our success. In addition to the online engagement, we have reached out to all the adjacent property owners through our right away process. Just letting them know that they can, who to contact, how they contact us to get a conversation and learn about the project. We didn't get a lot of response with those letters, but we anticipate with the second engagement, since there will be alternatives shown that will generate some more interest in the project and we're anticipating a higher response to those letters. So what did we hear from the last engagement? So there were three main comments that we heard. First of what, these are in no particular order, but the first one was a lack of pedestrian facilities. The other two were traffic operational and safety concerns specifically on the north end by the Menards driveway. And then the third one was Everton Avenue at 19th street intersection. And we do have a summary of all the comments we received and how many and if they were via the map or via the survey on our website that you are welcome to go and visit. We do keep our online engagement websites open. We never take them down during the project. The only thing that we take down is the comment section. So the county does have a cost participation policy. And this policy covers trails, right away, curb and gutter retaining wall, storm water treatment, traffic signal system. I'm not going to go into detail about this. Ryan Goodman, the city engineer is very versed in this policy. He can answer any questions, but above and beyond that, if the city council would like the county to come in and give a recap of it in history and what all it details, we're more than welcome to set up another workshop to come and talk about the policy in more detail. But this is just a reminder that there is a policy, there is financial investment from the city. So we encourage any and all involvement from city staff and council members. So now what are we looking at? What's the right fit for the corridor? So you'll see on the top section, so that's a two lane alternative. The bottom section is a three lane alternative. So which, which one is the best fit? We're really seeing that the northern section, the best fit is a three lane section with all the driveways with the new development going in. We feel that's the best fit. South of 19, we still don't know what the best fit is. And what's really driving that is where the pedestrian facilities are going to end up and where are those crossings going to end up? And once we nail that down and get a preferred alternative with that, then, then it will tell us which alternative between these two is the best fit south of 19. And so I'm going to pause here for a minute and kind of walk through this cross section because it's going to come. It's going to be important in our detailed conversation later on in my presentation. So the lanes, the through lanes and the turn lane here. So this is standard state aid width. So that's what guides us to, to know what, what's, what width of lanes to put in. Then we move over to the shoulder, so the eight foot shoulder. So the purpose of the shoulder is to provide multimodal opportunities. So you've got different types of bikes, bikers out there. You've got the moms with kids or that like choose the trail, but then you have more aggressive bikers that like to go fast, like to go long distances and really prefer to be in road. So we like to give them an area within the highway. In addition to handling the water and handling snow storage, that's really the purpose of the shoulder. Then we move into the 10 foot boulevard, this first green area here. So that is where we put signs, where we put underground utilities. And then we also put snow. So that's, that's really where our snow storage goes. That also provides distance between the pedestrians on the trail and the traffic. And that provides that lower, a higher comfort level for them, a lower stress level for the, for that user. So that's an important aspect of having that boulevard width and considering that boulevard width. The 10 foot trail is really, in this quarter, we're only looking at providing pedestrian accommodations on one side of the road. So having a 10 foot trail allows for two-way pedestrian and bike traffic to really be there and have north and south on traffic. Have room to pass and to walk in a comfortable distance. And then the backside of the trail here, the utility quarter, that's really where we want to see the overhead utilities. That preserves the sightlines from the traveling motorists and the pedestrians. So we like to see those on the backside of the trail. That being said, this is our ideal, but it doesn't always fit in every scenario or corridor. So then this is where our starting point. And then we start doing road diets from here and seeing where can we reduce our right away needs, our utility needs, our pedestrian needs, turn lane needs. And above and beyond that, on this corridor, we're looking at access management, but also wetland impacts.
Morgan, if I could, where, so this diagram is incredibly helpful. And if we were to consider what is there today for footprint? How would that look if you were to layer today's footprint on top of, for example, the three lane section? Does, do you have like some approximation of what that footprint would look like?
We do, and that's part of our outreach figures that we're putting together right now. So specifically for north of 19, we are looking at this. But we're also looking at an alternative where the center lane is today and we're shifting it to the east. And the reason why we're looking at that alternative is to reduce the wetland impacts on the west side. So, but we need to look at it with every single perspective with everything. So, so, and that too shifts the curb line to the east, which the east has a lot of existing buildings and things like that. So it is an alternative we're looking at. But yes, so our online engagement mid February will have those alternatives.
Thank you.
Intersection control is another thing that we're looking at. The picture on the left is the Menards driveway. It's on the bottom part of the picture. And then this is Broadway up here with Home Depot in the foreground. So this was taken from our drone in May. So it's, it was in the middle of the lockdown from COVID. So traffic volumes were down at this time, but as you can see, we still, Menards and Home Depot during that time actually were extremely busy. So we still had average traffic out here. So you can see the congestion issues and the, and the store, the lack of storing that we have getting from Everton left onto Broadway. So we are in talks with Menards. With alternatives that we're showing in mid February, we aren't showing any alternatives to relocate that driveway. And that is just due to the fact that we need to know what cross section alternative from the previous slide. What's our preferred alternative? Cause that then impacts, that defines what the roadway impact is versus what is the driveway relocation impact? It really helps with that cost participation discussion with Menards. So we are in talks with Menards, but we're kind of on pause right now till we get a preferred alternative and then we can move forward with that discussion with them. They do agree that there is operational issues with this driveway, so they are willing and an active participant in looking at this. So the 19th street and Everton intersection, the picture on the right. So we did do a signal warrant analysis. It does not meet signal warrant. So we're looking at what other tools we have in the toolbox. How does traffic operate out there today? How we're anticipating traffic, especially with the increase of development that's happening out here. We have a model that we will project out what we anticipate that traffic to be and what kind of improvements can we, can we do to this intersection to really make the residents on the west side, but then deliveries and commercial and industrial service and truck movement on the east side? How do we balance that? We did look at a roundabout through here, but there are, there's a lot of impacts to the surrounding landowners. So we felt that was not, that's not an alternative we wanted to be forward with.
Do you find, do you find a lot of, is most of the traffic at that intersection turning? Or do you find a lot of cross, is there a lot of traffic crossing?
Oh, going from let's say west side to east side, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, is the, is the cross traffic from an Everton perspective, is it turning traffic? Or is there, are they, or is there not really a consistent pattern?
I don't know that offhand. I would have to look that up and look at what our traffic bombs are saying, but I can get back to you with that.
It's okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Also Morgan, I have a kind of a question, but if you could explain to council members who may not know what the signal warrant analysis process is, because I think this, some intersection control at 19th street is probably high in the wish list of residents and I think there's going to be a lot of feedback on that issue.
It is. And I'm thankful Joe Duffson is on the call tonight so he can, he can, if he wants to chime in, if I don't cover everything and he has some other thing to add, I encourage him to chime in. But signal warrant analysis, so there's, there's certain aspects and traffic. So we take, go out and take traffic volumes and then we take those traffic and turning movement volumes. And we looked at different types of criteria and that criteria is, it's in the Minnesota manual of uniform traffic control. So it's a statewide manual, which is actually, it's a federal manual that Minot has taken and tweaked a little bit, but the, the signal warrant has not been, it's a federal standard. And so you look at those and it has to meet certain warrants. So the amount of time you have to wait for a gap, the amount of time, how many pedestrians are crossing, things like that. So you take that and you plug it in and it tells you if it's, how it's working and does it, does it justify a signal? If the wait time is, is too long or there's high enough volumes, you don't have that gap. So that's a federal standard that Minnesota uses to determine if a signal is warranted or not.
Thank you.
So another alternative that we're looking at is where to put the pedestrian and bicycle facility. So we did look at an alternative where it's putting on the east side and due to constraints and impacts, it was deemed not feasible. So we're really looking at that west side, north of 19th of where that pedestrian accommodation is going to be. But then as we move south, where are we going to cross those pedestrians? The intersection at the very end of the corridor down at 220th street, that's a really wide intersection. It also has what's called a slip right. So as you're, as you're coming across, going westbound on 220th and you go to go north on Everton, that you have a wider than normal radius, which means you can have a faster speed when you make that right turn. So we really want to avoid crossing pedestrians there right now if we can. So we're looking at alternatives and that's one of the alternatives that we're going to present to you later on in this presentation of where should those crossings be? And what impacts to each of the alternatives have? The other pedestrian design that we're going to talk about in more detail further on is the Broadway Trail connection. So in this picture here, Home Depot is off the page. On top of the picture, the strip mall with Jimmy John's and Taco John's, the hotel and the quick oil changes on the south. Menards is on the left side. So this connection is really important to get pedestrians from the facility we're proposing in Everton over to the existing pedestrian facility on Everton that crosses the 35th bridge and into that network and connect them with that industry over there. So, so the east side of this driveway is really constrained. We don't have a lot of right of way to work with. So we're going to go over some alternatives for that and walk you and get feedback on that. And lastly, we're looking at storm water management. So there is an existing pond on the south end of the corridor. That's the red circle. We've met with Minot and they're supportive with us using that and expanding that to help with the water quality. And then for the project wise, we've identified a couple of locations along here to, as water treatment locations. One of which is that city parcel just south of 19th on the east side. And then there's a couple of other ones too that, that we're looking at. Some of the challenges along this quarter is there's a lot of wetland. We don't want to impact the wetland is, and then limited right of way. So moving forward, this is the schedule for the project. So we're, we're nearing the end of preliminary design. And what really defines a, when we go from preliminary design to final design is when we come to the city and request resolution of support. So when we come to a preferred alternative. Now with, we still have that identified of spring 2021, which is coming up. So we're looking around March, but that being said, with the schedule being pushed out a year, that does give us a little more time that if there is an aspect of the design we want to talk about a little further, want to dive a little deeper into, have another workshop to discuss, that's perfectly acceptable and will fit in our timeframe. But we still identify spring 2021 as our goal to get that preferred alternative. And with that, I'll open it up to questions. Once we get done with any questions or discussions we want to have, I'll move into the detailed concepts that we would like feedback on. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm muted. Sorry. Open it up to council, council and also staff. What questions do we have at this point? I have some, I have some overall questions, but I would actually, we might touch on some of them during some of the different concepts that I think you're going to present. So I might hold until we're at, we've covered those. Overall, if you could go, Morgan, could you go back to that slide that has the, the footprint with the two lane concept and the three lane concept? Cause this is going to relate to my overall feedback. I know that the footprint is potentially shifting from a what's there today versus what might be in the future based off of some design considerations. But overall, whether it's a two lane section or a three lane section, it's a significant change from what's there today just of, you know, we don't have the pedestrian facility, there's not great shoulder width. And so the, the, just generally, how would the two lane section? How much larger are we talking about on either side of the project, overall project space from where we sit today? And I asked that because it's a condensed area that is still undergoing, you know, some, some development, but also there's some redevelopment opportunities in there as well. And so I'm just thinking about kind of right scale of project to meet those needs. And so kind of understanding from a width perspective is, are we talking about 25% more space on either side? Is, do you have like a rough approximation?
So north of 19, for sure, we have, I know we have 66 feet total of right of way.
Of additional, of existing.
Right of way. Yep. So, so it's 33 feet from center line. So if you took center line, we'd have 33 feet in each direction.
Okay.
If that puts it into this perspective of.
That helps.
Okay.
And that's existing right of way, but not all developed, right? That's identity preserved from a right of way perspective, but not developed, right?
So it doesn't go, the 33 feet doesn't go from edge of payment to edge of payment. Is that what you're asking? It does go beyond existing roadway. So there is, because there is utilities out there that need to be within that right of way. So we always provide.
Of course.
Room for them outside of the curb line. So it does go past that curb line a little bit to fit that utility space out there today.
Okay.
So Mayor Bain and city council, just to go off of that point, you know, you bring up a good point. Mara, and that's something that we've discussed with the PMT meeting. So I think what you're really asking is the existing roadway out there today is about a 32 foot back to back. So from back of one curb to the back of the other side in your narrow portion of Everton. And what you're, we're proposing at this time, the county's proposing is most likely from 19th to Broadway is the bottom section, which is a 50 foot face to face. So currently we have 66 foot right of way out there. And there's some weird easements here and there and I don't, you know, all those distances at this time. Most certainly, we're going to acquire wider right of way. And, but then when we get into the typical section that we're looking on the bottom of the screen is that's where we're in discussions with the county on what we can do to potentially put some of that stuff on a road diet, as Morgan mentioned earlier. You know, one, we got some local concerns with enforcement on potential or inviting parking on the street that we know we are, will be posting as no parking. But then also just the wetland impacts that are proposed on the northwestern side of the project. And then more impervious area we end up with is the more area we're going to have to treat and the stricter of the two watershed districts too. So that's also going to take a lot of area and space. So what we can come to a solution through the project development will have a lot of, minimize a lot of things, right? Obviously costs, footprints of stormwater facilities. And just hopefully we still achieve that safe corridor that we're looking at. And then also that's why we've been very proactive with the county from right off the get go about wanting to implement at least one side of pedestrian facilities because of the existing neighborhood that's kind of landlocked from anything else. But then also working with the county long-term and how we can connect to Broadway. And then also with the future 11th avenue or county stated highway 32 project. That's a program for 2026. So just some extra background and the stuff that we've been working through, some of the concerns that have been arrived, have arisen through the PMT meetings and where we're kind of going right now.
It's helpful context, Ryan. I just, so just looking at this and thinking about the types of traffic out there and again, the overall footprint. It's, it's a, it's a significant change in footprint. And so I we, I want a robust project, but I also don't want, I also know that some of those areas are pretty sensitive to what that's going to take from a, you know, land acquisition and to, you know, gain that additional right of way space. So want to keep that in mind as well. Eight foot shoulders, is that something that's, how does an eight foot shoulder on this project align with what some other projects that we've done recently around Forest Lake, Ryan?
That's kind of a tough comparison. You know, the city, the county, the Minot all have different design standards and you know, that's where we're starting is the design standard that the county has. And you know, we have different sort of opinions and we'll work through those and try to minimize the project impacts where we can, but still provide corridor safety and efficiency and allow for future growth. I think one major improvement that we've, I believe we've agreed verbally through a lot of our PMT is the implementation of that center left turn lane, which is going to allow a lot of flexibility of redevelopment of the commercial property or industrial property on the east side of the corridor. Because what types of delivery trucks or stuff like that you have coming and going and just whatever time they need to get set up for that turn or get that delivery ready, which, you know, we have that on some of our own local roadways. And that's provided a great benefit to those properties. And we've seen some growth along those roadways because of the better transportation and safer for the truckers that can get into some of those tight areas and deliver the materials, the supplies to those businesses that are on that corridor. So I think that's something that's obviously going to be a huge benefit in the area, you know? Where we've had the most discussion is certainly on the shoulder whis and potentially a boulevard with, but still, you know, the overall right of way is very important to secure part of this project. To allow for safe invisible sight distances, snow storage and, you know, other components of the, the project that are being looked at.
It's helpful. I don't mean to monopolize the questions, council. What other questions do you have or staff, please chime in?
Mayor Bain, I, you guys have covered a lot, a lot, I think of, of what I had on my list. I generally, you know, this is really beautiful and it's going to be a wonderful improvement in that area. I agree though, I am concerned about the footprint. You know, when I, when I think about the goal of that road, it really is kind of point A to point B, right? It's, it's coming off of a limb, typically kind of driving through to Menards or cutting across there to get to Cub. You know, that kind of thing. So some of this feels a little, a little excessive to me. I did hear a little bit about the, the possibility of a, of the, of the three lane utilizing the center turn lane kind of on the north end there. That certainly makes some sense to me with all of the issues we have on 19th and then again, kind of up by that Menards area. I'm concerned about the, I'm concerned about the shoulders. We have started receiving, I know I have, and I'm sure other council members have, we've started receiving some complaints and concerns about parking along that street now with the apartment building. And when they're having, you know, gatherings or they need to move vehicles out. You know, it's, it's really creating some issues along there. And I'm concerned that this is going to welcome that. The width of those shoulders is going to welcome that. And I'm, I'm concerned about a safety issue there, particularly if there are, you know, cars pulling out of those, you know, kind of some of those drive areas, potentially a pedestrian, you know, trying to cross between two cars, you know, that kind of thing. So that, that particular, that, that is, that's kind of bothering me a little bit and I'm not, I'm not necess, I'm not sure it's necessary. I, it's just the whole safety issue that I'm concerned about there. I think, I think the rest of it, you, I think the rest of it, you kind of covered with my, where my notes are concerned. I'll leave it at that and then chime back in if it, something else comes to mind. But those are, those are my general kind of first, first, first look comments. I'll leave it at that and then chime back in if it, something else comes to mind. But those are, those are my general kind of first, first, first look comments.
Very good. Other council members, other questions at this point or should we hold until? I think that, uh, Morgan, you have some discussion items specifically to walk us through, right?
Correct.
And we can certainly circle back for a broader discussion after those as well.
Yep. Go ahead.
I just have one more, one more thing. I, and, and this is maybe a, this is maybe a city staff question or, 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 or something to respond to. In terms of additional growth in that area, I mean, we, we are not going to be seeing, I know we have a new apartment complex, right, coming in potentially in that area. But in addition to that, we're really maxed out growth-wise in that area. Is that correct? So in terms of, you know, any additional, residential or, I, I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think of this, you know, this larger footprint in the context of what else may be going in that area.
All the land then, if this apartment were to build prior to us getting there with the project, all the land west of Everton Avenue that can be built on would have been built on in the city of Forest Lake.
I can think of, well, yeah, sorry, Ryan, um, but the custom mall design building does have room to expand, yeah, on the east side.
I was just talking west first.
Okay.
Some of you, council elected officials were around when we were entertaining some development work with Shared Utilities over to Columbus. They would have to all access up to Broadway, west of, way west of Menards. So if you remember any of those conversations, none of that access could come through this way because of the wetlands and all the barriers around there. Obviously to the east, if any of these buildings redevelop, they would take down existing buildings and build something new. Whatever those uses would be, would be determined in the future. I, I don't, you know, envision any heavy commercial use there, especially with the trends in the economy today. Now, if we triggered a land application, land use change and accommodated more apartment buildings on that side of the road, that's all, honestly, that's an option always available in any piece of property within the city over time. So, you know, but they would have a roadway basically on the west and east of them, uh, one of our local roadways, nineteenth. And then Everton here, so, it gives a little more flexibility in those lots with alternative routes for transportation. But as far as the west side, this would be the last development, uh, develop a land available in the city of Forest Lake.
It's helpful context. Other questions? All right, let's move on to some of the alternatives and then we can circle back on other questions as they come up.
All right. Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman. Um, I just want to point out too that we do not allow parking on county highway. So it will be, um, no parking and, and I believe Ryan has requested that we actually sign it. We usually don't sign it, but we can sign it, so.
But then, but then we have an enforcement issue.
Right.
Well, and, and, you know, we have to consider the capacity of law, our, our local law enforcement or, you know, I suppose county, if they're in the area to be able to, to handle that. So.
Yep. Yep. Thank you for that comment. Um, we, we've been talking with Ryan, um, regarding the shoulder width. And so we're trying to come up with a compromise of, how can we still provide adequate spacing for ons, for the needs of the shoulder? But then also make it so it's uncomfortable and it doesn't invite parking, um, people parking when they're not supposed to be parking anyway. So we're working through that. So hopefully we come up with a compromise soon. Uh, well, with our preferred alternative, we will.
Morgan, to that, to that point, I'll just chime in with one other comment. And I know you mentioned that, that the needs of a more recreational biker versus some of the more serious bikers. I wouldn't say that area has a lot of access points. And so I, I am concerned of, too much encouraging of those types of activities because again, there's all, just, it's just especially closer to Menards, there's so much going on, that if there is a safe, um, off-grade trail alternative, I would, I would encourage us to encourage that use. Um, it's a small section before they're able to get to a more open space, so.
And, and I would agree with that. I'm a fan of multimodal. I just don't know that it's necessary here. So, you know, with, with, uh, with the, you know, the asphalt trail that you have identified, I'm just not sure that riding on the road is necessary here. So.
All right. So moving to, um, our first detailed discussion. So this is the Broadway. So we're, this picture was taken, um, on nineteenth street looking west. So in front of us is Menards. So you can see the quick oil change on the corner and then on the other side of that Jiffy Loop sign is the hotel. Um, so I put this picture on there to kind of give you an idea, um, and to talk about the constraints that we're seeing within this section where we want to put a trail. So you can see that there, the, the curb line here versus the curb line here, it's a different elevation. So we're looking at, it's on a hill. So we're gonna, it's gonna need some kind of retaining wall through here to build up a trail. Now, depending on which alternative we go with, depends on what kind of retaining wall. Um, there's a lot of utilities. You can see these handholds here, um, and then the intake here. Um, those are all utilities. Um, you can see the pedestal back here, some kind of communication is there. So, um, there's a lot of utilities underground through here. Um, this right here is an intake. So the, the drainage from this parking lot drains here and enters a pipe, and then enters the structure here and then gets into the stormwater system. So we need to take that into consideration. Um, and then to the signage, we've got signage in here. So, um, that needs to be, um, set back off the back of curb. You can see the sign is wider than the post. Um, and then when plow truck comes through, they're about the same height, the, the rearview mirror is about the same height and then they overhang. So we really, we set back signs so we avoid that collision and the takedown of the signs. Um, and then I also want to point out this curb line here is you can see the car, just because this is the curb line, but when cars park, the nose of the car overhangs over. So when I show you these alternatives and the impact that they may have to this parking lot, take that into account too, that these are just estimates. We haven't looked to see really what that overhang is and it might have, um, more impact to the parking lot by maybe one stall, but just know these are estimates. Um, we might not necessarily be impacting the actual curb, but that retaining wall might get close enough where we need to adjust that and maybe put a bumper in, so the car doesn't pull up as far. Um, but that's a detail that we're not to yet. We're still just looking at alternatives. So I just wanted to point that out, that these are estimate impacts, estimated impacts. So this is, um, this section. So that picture is, was taken here looking east, uh, on nineteenth. So this is nineteenth street, on the left side of this picture, on the east, on the right side of this picture here is, um, Everton. Um, this is the strip mall and then the hotels in the middle and then the quick oil changes on the left side. Um, Home Depot is gonna be on the, the bottom part of this picture. So we're looking south. Um, so the, the area we really want to focus on is the left side of this driveway. Um, the east, the right side of this driveway, we have a lot of right-of-way, existing right-of-way there. There's not a lot of impact. We can, we can really build, the, what the county traditionally builds, um, a ten-foot boulevard, ten-foot trail and then have space on the backside. Um, but this left side of the trail, it's really constrained. So if we were to build a ten-foot boulevard, ten-foot trail, um, the squiggle line here is a retaining wall. So we would have to build a retaining wall almost the whole way. Um, and then on top of that, the, the, the adjacent landowner impacts are significant. So we would have to encroach in and acquire right-of-way and impact their parking. Um, which, yes, this is ideal for the user and for the utilities. Um, this is the ideal design, but is it really the right fit? Given the impacts to costs, the impacts to adjacent landowners, we don't feel this is a great fit for this section. So, what, what then can we do with our road diet? What can we, um, compromise on, um, to get this to be a right fit? So the first, um, alternative is we reduce the trail from ten feet to eight foot. Um, this is, um, allows us to still have an asphalt trail. Um, and then put a five-foot boulevard instead of a ten-foot boulevard. So with this design, we still have a little bit of impact to the hotel parking lot. Um, we avoid impact to that quick oil change. It still requires retaining wall, but a significantly less retaining wall. Um, I, I forgot to mention and I'll, I'll flip back here in a second, but right-of-way impacts. Um, so this one, um, we have a little impact here on the corner, um, just to get around that signal cabin. There's utilities down here we need to get around. But we have about six hundred and thirty square foot of right-of-way need on this alternative, whereas this first alternative, we had two thousand three hundred squared foot. So it's significantly less right-of-way impact, um, which is better for the budget. It's better for the adjacent landowners, though there is still impact. And like I said, this retaining wall, I can, um, I don't know how far off from that curb line. So we might have to adjust the stall here or it might be considered, uh, uh, too big of a, um, too cumbersome of that impact. So this might, might edge up to two stalls, but right now we're just saying it's a one-stall. Impact. Um, and then our third alternative that we looked at here is really reducing that three-foot boulevard, um, reducing down to a three-foot boulevard, maintaining an eight-foot trail. The retaining wall, um, remains about the same length as the, the previous alternative, but our right-of-way, um, reduced down to three hundred and five square feet. Um, so this one, it, it's compromising the comfort level of the, the pedestrian. You're a lot closer to the, the moving traffic. Um, that three-foot boulevard is really too skinny. You can't get, um, green grass to grow in that. So we'd probably have to pave up to the back of curb. We're also, um, that, that sign spacing on this one, we're really impacting that. So there probably will be overhang of signage on the trail. But that being said, this design is present west or east of here on the other side of, of the bridge, um, where we are constrained in areas. So it, it's not that it isn't, we don't have the situation, um, within the corridor. So we have gone with this before. Um, and this design shows no, um, impact to the curb line of that, of that parking lot. So, um, Ryan, did I, did I miss anything? Did you want to add anything to, to these two?
I would just, I would just add to this conversation, the specific point right here is we looked at anything from, uh, the traditional six-foot sidewalk all the way, up to the ten-foot trail. Just east of here, right across nineteenth, we have six-foot sidewalk. So we're on the very outskirts where, pedestrian facilities end in the city in this part. So we wanted to provide flexibility that if we, want to continue a trail and farther, farther we go west, the more room we have in the future. And with residential development out that way, that's where we're really leaning in on the eight-foot trail. Uh, it provides the needs that we think would set up this area for long-term. Uh, and then has the lesser impact, especially of the ten-foot, but then, you know, better serviceability than the six-foot sidewalk. You know, another thing that was a concern when we're taking that many parking spots from the hotel. You know, if they ever wanted to re-convert or go back and get those spots, they're landlocked. They don't have area to do stormwater improvements. So, I mean, anything that they build, this, they would have to do something off, off-site, which would probably get much more expensive too. So that was something that, you know, right there, that was just so much impact and, um, just really trying to fit something that's not gonna fit. So, right now, we're, we're leaning on the eight-foot trail. Uh, determined between a three or a five-foot boulevard. Maybe it's a combination of two on each side, but, uh, really just kind of want to, get the nod from the council that you're in support of an eight-foot trail versus, we've kind of obviously already deleted the six-foot wide sidewalk because, as we cross Everton Avenue here, we'll have a ten-foot trail right-of-way. But then from that, uh, connection point at, uh, right there, we could potentially in the future someday have a ten-foot trail, connected to the, maybe even into Columbus and then feed all that residential development. That would be growth there, plus that school on North Lakes Academy. That's up in that area where we've had them install some pedestrian improvements along their front footage of their site improvements. So there's a reason in where we're going and why with the dimensions and, uh, that's the background in the area and the concepts and the dimensions that we all looked at and the, the thoughtfulness review of all the project impacts.
So just to confirm, is it right now is four B kind of the frontrunner as far as options?
Um, well, no, we, we haven't really discussed front runners or, or, um, which one is the preferred. Uh, we're just looking at both of them. Um, as you can see, this, yeah, all this yellow in here, the line work in here, those are all utilities. So we're looking at putting utilities under the trail in this quarter. It's really tight regardless. Whereas if, uh, having a five-foot boulevard, it will allow some of the utilities to go in that boulevard and be easier to be accessible. But this, like I, like I said, the three-foot, um, boulevard is, it's not unheard of. And, but it, it's gonna be tight.
I, so I, I played Frogger and ran through this area a couple of times over the summer and, a, any of these options are just such a grand improvement from what's there today where literally you're, walking on uneven grass, just trying to get from one spot to the other, that, I, I would personally be in favor of whatever we're able to do that, um, provides a safe option, but also minimizes the impact to the adjacent property owners. Cause again, just having a paved, um, walkway that is, is, I mean, y- yes, we want to get above something that's just the bare minimum, but it's just, night and day different than what is there today. And so, um, you know, I, I would advocate for preserving those spaces, for, um, those businesses and, um, and if that means a, a smaller boulevard and an eight-foot trail rather than ten feet, again, it's, it's a grand, um, beautiful addition from what's there today. So, council, I don't know if you have other perspectives on that.
No, I, 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 I concur, Marad. I, I think eight, eight feet seems reasonable to me in that section. You know, of the city, it's, it's providing some connectivity across nineteenth to get up over the bridge. Um, and, you know, will kind of enhance that area, for, for those businesses potentially, if somebody wants to walk down and go to the internet keys, for example. Um, I think, um, you know, and then when we, we make the round onto, you know, Everton, we're looking at a wider, a wider path there. I, this, this seems reasonable to me.
Also, Ryan, if, if, if whatever is, if we did concessions related to what's on the bridge, if that's what's proposed to be somewhat of, I like the, the term, uh, uh, roadway diet. Um, if that's what's proposed here, um, to me, that all aligns because from a user perspective, once you're at the bridge in that newly developed area, it just feels so much safer. And so alignment to those standards seems to make sense. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate that we need to go much further than that.
And I think that's why the eight-foot trail fits well here. And, whether we go a three-foot or a five-foot boulevard, some of that could be steered by what we find out, what type of private utilities under here. Do they have a big vault? That we can't move? And we're stuck with it. We're, you know, that's, that's the next level of investigation the county is gonna go through, through this area. Uh, and obviously when you start getting into plans and design, you find some things that you might not have seen or known when you're looking more out. We're basically looking at a two-dimensional concept right here. So, once they go through and do cross-sections and stuff like that, then sometimes you gotta make some adjustments. Whether it's shrinking or you can go wider, you know, but that, that'll be determined through that process that they will explore.
I'd like to, oh, sorry. Oh, I was just saying, I'd like to offer a, a word of support for the five-foot boulevard, um, to make it more comfortable pedestrian experience, um, there because of the, traffic that speeds by, as well as just additional room to accommodate utilities. And I just think that if you can put grass in there, it's gonna hide a lot of the stuff that gets kicked up from the, from the road a lot easier and just, I think a much more better aesthetic.
Pushing snow is gonna be an issue there too, I think, to some degree. So those are all considerations. You get as much room there as you can, you know. The general idea is, is great. And I, I would certainly support an eight-foot wide trail to accommodate, you know, to get us any more room that we can get there. But let's not lose sight of the snow problem. So.
Yeah. Good point.
Questions or points of feedback at this point? Sam, go ahead.
Well, I think they're just, I think the, the plan, you know, you get a couple of alternatives that still need to be worked out here that I think are workable and, we're doing, or they're doing what we can, what's possible there. So that's all there is to it. And it's, and it will be a big improvement. No doubt about it.
All right. Madam Mayor, Councilman, thank you all for that feedback. Um, we're gonna take that and then add it to the, the feedback that we hear on our online engagement next week. Um, I just want to point out another thing is Donovan has let us know that there is a parking, um, contract between the hotel and the strip malls here. And that may come into play when we look at these alternatives too, through our right-of-way process, if we can impact that parking stall or not. So that, there's a lot outside of utilities and everything else that come into play, but having, um, support from the council. But having, um, support from the council on either one with a prefer, it sounds like the preferred is the five foot. Pending further investigation. Um, so, uh, the next section that we're going to discuss is pedestrian crossing. Where should that southern, um, section of Everton have the pedestrian crossing facility? So, um, this is south facing. So this is, um, County Highway 33 with the bridge that got installed about 10 years ago. This is Mid Knot's rest area and then Mid Knot's maintenance facility. Um, and then moving north, we're, we're hovering around 19th street intersection here. So, um, so looking at that, so here's 19th street on the right side of the picture. Um, so this is showing the three lane alternative south of 19. So this is just an alternative. It's not, we have not selected this, um, as the right fit yet. It, it's all going to play in where does this pedestrian crossing go? So this first alternative is the furthest south. Um, so this driveway about middle, middle here is where that new storage facility is. So that's their new driveway. Um, so with this one, the blue, um, filled in area here that is wetland impact. So we are looking at some wetland impacts with this alternative. Um, there isn't any right away, um, needs at, with this, um, alternative. Um, so, so wetland impacts on this one. Um, so this is would be, um, uh, pedestrian crossing in the middle here is a pedestrian refuge. So, um, as a pedestrian's crossing, they would have a refuge in the middle of the road. So they would just pay attention to if they're moving, um, west to east, they would pay attention to southbound. Um, find a gap, cross, and then they would have a refuge in the middle and then look at northbound and wait for a gap and then cross. Um, so that's, that's the purpose of that, that, um, middle of the road treatment. Um, the second alternative then would move that crossing north. Um, so with this one, there is right away impact. So the red fill is, is what would the right, right away impacts would be on this one. Um, this green fill, so, um, this red mark here and here is, is to outline where the car is. And the distance from the car to the pedestrian on a 40 mile an hour road, this is the distance they would need to safely stop. So here, this is just showing that we do meet that, that, that design standard that the car at this point would be able to see that pedestrian in the crossing and would have time to make a complete stop. Um, before, um, getting to the pedestrian. So that's all that that green is indicating. It's not indicating that this is the limit, that this is the, the, this is past this way and past this way that they won't be able to see the pedestrian. This is just indicating that we meet that design standard.
What is the, what is the amount of curvature there? Is that, is it?
Yeah.
Just really minimal and not even an impact or?
It's, what is that? It's matching what's there today.
Okay.
So we're not updating that curve. We're matching into it. Um, so we're not, yeah. So out there today, if you were to, um, drive it, it would be, um, this right here.
Are we worried about having a pedestrian crossing on what is the beginning part of that curve? It's, is it a visual distraction where your drivers are looking for the curve and where the roadway is going? And they're not necessarily thinking about pedestrians?
Line of sight, where, where is that line of sight? Where are they focused on as a driver?
That's my, yeah.
Um, so I don't know the, the studies behind that and how, how far in advance, uh, a driver is looking as they're driving. Um, but there will be, um, signs ahead of this indicating that there is a ped crossing upcoming, um, to notify the driver to be aware of that.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think, I think, you know, I, Mar, I think you bring up some good concerns. I think the other concern would be proximity to that 19th street crossing there as well. Um, it feels close. Um, and you know, is there a distraction coming up on that knowing, knowing there, that intersection is there and thinking, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I, I generally, I generally like it placed a little further south. Um, but then I, I don't really understand the wetland impact there either. Um, to be able to make enough of an informed decision on, you know, really what, what is the, what is the better of the two? I don't, maybe.
Is there no planned crossing at 19th?
Not in this alternative. So that would mean, so, and I'll show you the next alternative and walk you through.
Okay.
Um, so this one has the pedestrian crossing at 19th. And so all this red, um, fill here, that's all right away impact. That's all additional right away that we need to acquire to build the trail on the east side here. And that impacts the parking lot on this adjacent, uh, um, car dealership. So that's, that's the downside to this one is that there's, there's not a lot of right away in that east side. And it will have significant impacts to adjacent landowner.
That's not my first choice.
And that's a, that's a challenge. And then the, the reason why the first option wasn't further to the south, that's because of the design of that intersection, correct, is just not amenable to pedestrians. Is that right?
Why it's not at, at the, the southern intersection?
Yeah.
It's because that's, that's a really wide intersection that, and we just, um, did some updates to that intersection. And so coming through and ripping all those improvement out, i- is there an alternative to that? So the safety is number one, but then we also look at what improvements do we just make at that intersection?
Yeah. On that option, the first option you had, I do have a concern of and it, traffic, my, I, I believe traffic moves at a pretty rapid rate coming around that corner. Cause there's no stop. And so come, flying around that corner and then having a pedestrian crossing mid, you know, what's, is from a driver is going to seem like in the middle of nowhere. I have some concerns with that as well. I am not, I'm not very optimistic tonight. And I don't mean to sound so pessimistic.
But I'm, yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if there, yeah, I know, um, um, Councilmember Beistrum, I, I know your concerns around that right away impact around the 19th street crossing. Um, that one, I'm just wondering if there's some alternative there that kind of puts it still at 19th, but minimizes those impacts to the, you know, the, the east side there, the car dealership. Um, and because I'm still think that people are still going to want to cross the 19th. You know, there's still, you know, a lot of people on that, you know, on the west side. And I think people expect to cross it crossings as well as people, drivers expect to see people crossing at, at crossings. Um, you know, in, in, intersections, I mean. Um, so I guess I'd like to see, wonder if there's some other alternatives there that we don't have that, you know, almost 11,000 square foot impact. But do you get the, the crossing somehow on, uh, at 19th?
Yeah. And there is, um, we can look at this boulevard that we do have the 10 foot boulevard through this turn lane, which, which through the turn lane, we could potentially work with Ryan and see what kind of alternatives we can look there and look at the utilities, um, and drainage. Um, and as we move out, there is opportunity then to follow this taper with the trail. Um, to, to minimize impact to, to landowner. So there is tweaks we could do to this alternative. Um, as we get into more detailed design.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed necessarily to the, to placement of it, Donovan. I'm, I'm opposed, I think I'm, I'm more opposed to the impact on the landowner, probably.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sensitive of that. I've talked to that landowner many times and he's about how many cars he's trying to squeeze on there. And I'm actually welcoming the, uh, stormwater ponding on the, on the city parcel down there. Because there's been cars parked there for, for a couple of years. We, you know, we've, you know, we go back and forth with, I mean, he's, he's, he's responsive, but, uh, that'll resolve an issue.
Yeah. And I, and I don't disagree with you at all. People are going to try to cross there. You know, um, so that I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to that. Maybe, maybe a little bit of a redesign or something and take a look at it again.
I, I think, yeah, I, I think, so personally, I think whatever we can do to have that crossing be as far north as possible. I just have a perception that there's a lot more pedestrian activity from north, from 19th north than there is on that southern section. That southern section is more through traffic, people accessing, you know, going somewhere else versus the activity on 19th is, it's, it's a natural crossroads. And if there's a way we could safely accommodate pedestrians where drivers expect pedestrians to be without having a huge impact to the adjacent property owners, it might be my preferred. Otherwise we're, we're creating a crossing and that just where there isn't naturally a crossing and.
It's the others are a little more random. I would agree. And the one on the curve bothers me first, for safety reasons. And, um, you know, I'd be open to hearing, um, uh, safety experts, you know, opinion on that, but, um, it's just my perception.
Other council questions or comments at this point? All right. Morgan, keep us moving.
All right. So that, those are our two alternatives. Joe, did, I just want to open the floor up. Did you have any input or, or anything to add to the conversation? Joe's our traffic engineer at the county, um, and maybe he can speak to some of the safety treatments that we give mid block crossings.
Sure. Thank you, Morgan. Um, so the, um, the drawing that Morgan showed, uh, showed sight lines on the curve is really the part that we would focus on. Um, and, uh, you know, there, there's pros and cons of each, uh, but on a straightaway versus a curve. Um, and for example, all of our roundabout crosswalks are all built with geometric curvature. And part of that is to slow the traffic down. What you want to focus on in these situations, especially in the three lane concept is it gives us an opportunity to put that center refuge island in. So people can cross just one lane at a time. And that makes sure that nobody's passing on the outside, uh, at that crosswalk, which is one of the, the biggest dangers that we see with crosswalk crap is in the twin cities. So, um, it's, it's very important to make sure that that sightline stays open. Um, so that's something, um, that we would, no pun intended, wouldn't want to lose sight of. But, um, to have it on the curve, uh, by itself isn't, uh, isn't a hazard unless it starts getting into some sort of a sightline obstruction. And it's the fixed objects. You also have to keep in mind, what are the other vehicles doing there? So, you know, if you're behind a, a bus, for example, um, what, what impact does that curve have on your ability, uh, to see that crosswalk? And you can make an argument that on a straightaway, um, that vehicle in front of you actually obstructs it even more, uh, compared to if there's some curvature there. So it, it's something we do want to keep on the table. Sorry, I, I forgot. I was also going to mention that just a quick update on the 19th street intersection. Uh, Morgan mentioned our signal warrants. Um, I wanted to mention, we do, uh, annually, as some of you might know, publish, uh, countywide ranking of intersections that looks at uh, not just signal warrants, but always stop warrants. And we have looked at the 19th street intersection in the past. Um, I was able to pull up a report from a couple of years ago and it, it didn't score really well. Um, it wasn't meeting any of the hours of warrants, um, and granted, traffic volumes have changed a little bit since then. Uh, but what was notable about it was there was a, uh, given the relatively low volume, there was a surprisingly high number of right angle crashes. And so we did make some adjustments to the signing a couple of years ago that, uh, may have had an impact on that. Uh, we'll have to check and see what the crashes are for the last couple of years. But one of the things that we noticed, for example, was there was a street sign in the, um, I gotta orient myself here with the southeast corner, uh, which is where if it weren't always stop, that's where one of those other stop signs would be for the cross street. So that was maybe one of the theories as people in their subconscious maybe thought it was an always stop and we're pulling out in front of people. Um, and w- we have heard from residents that there are quite a few, uh, people that cross there. And, um, it's kind of hard to get at exactly why, but, uh, certainly there's a residential area here. And 19th street is probably the most attractive route to connect to the rest of the trail system along Broadway. Uh, 19th is wide. It's certainly more comfortable to walk on than Everton currently is. And so that might be one of the drivers of why people are crossing there with the new trail. More people might opt to not cross there and instead take the new trail up to Broadway. So we want to make sure we're making those connections that people want to make.
That's a great, that's a great perspective because I think you're exactly right there, taking that to avoid playing Frogger by Bernard's, but given a better option on the north side. Um, you know, 19th isn't exactly a walk in the park with all of the car dealerships and there's, it's, yeah, it's in rough shape itself. So, yeah, it, that, that is a great perspective that the pedestrian flow will likely change with better options.
Yeah. And I think just to have that 19th intersection better marked, I, you know, you kind of come, you head north on Everton. And it, it can, when you come around that corner, it can kind of sneak up on you a little bit. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to improvements there as well.
Just one of the things that'll bling out to drivers in this area upon the finished product here is you're going to have at least curb and gutter some distance south out of this intersection and that just right there sets a very strict barrier for drivers to follow, which will delineate this area much better than it is today. Uh, so just bringing that up.
Nice.
So with that, I don't have anything else to present. We went through all of our detailed options and got feedback. I, I just want to thank everyone for their time and for all their comments and, and thoughtful, uh, consideration of everything that we've thrown at you tonight. We went through a lot, um, and we look forward to the online engagement, um, mid February. Ryan will let you know when exactly that date is. Um, and, and we encourage all of you, uh, you know, and, um, to go on and comment and, and let us know your thoughts. Um, so then it's documented, um, but then also encourage the public and, and who you, who you communicate with, um, within the city to comment and who travel this route, um, regularly.
That's fantastic. Morgan and Washington County team, thank you for all of the information tonight and being here. Um, this is, uh, a very important project and we appreciate your level of detail and, um, the opportunity to provide comment. Look forward to next discussion.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council, we will move on to our next discussion item this, this evening, which is, um, a discussion on the, uh, road paving assessment policy. And Patrick, are you starting us on this?
I'll start with you. Um, in the packet, we sent along the, uh, assessment policy for public streets, which we reviewed actually almost, uh, a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago. Um, we didn't have any formal action on that, but we're getting to the new construction season where that may be an issue. Uh, the policy calls for a change in the gravel road paving policy. Prior to this, uh, change, uh, any gravel road in the city, uh, if it wanted to go from a gravel road to a paved road reconstruction, uh, the landowners along that paved road would be assessed at a hundred percent of the cost. Um, this policy, uh, creates a commercial business district. And there's a map included in this, uh, that would change that allocation from a hundred percent to a 20% responsibility of the landowner. We really only have one or two streets that, that are in this boundary. Uh, one of them is Fifth Avenue. I'm not sure exactly what the other one is, to be honest with you. Uh, but that would change the policy. Uh, we are looking at possibly, uh, using that. If you change the policy to pave that street this year, it's, it's on the radar. Uh, the only thing that may stop that is the landowners, if they don't waive their, uh, right to assessment and, and things like that. The public hearing process, they can waive all that and speed up the process. But if we have to go through the regular assessment process, I'm not sure we're going to get, get it through. Uh, some of the commercials, some of those owners on Fifth Street indicated that most, we've been told that all of them want to participate. So, uh, we don't have that as a sure thing. We didn't have it written, but we, before we go down that road, want to make sure we change, uh, at least suggested that change. Uh, and schedule this if the council is interested for formal adoption, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, the only thing that you really question have to ask is if you want to, uh, if you're willing to consider this. And B is how does this change of 20% in the commercial business district differ than, uh, residential districts that are still assessed, will still be assessed at a hundred percent? And turn it back to you.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, opportunity for questions, comments? I, um, one of the questions that I saw when I was reviewing the packet, could somebody maybe display the, 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 um, map that's in the packet?
Um, yeah, I can't do that. Somebody, if somebody has the ability to show that up there, I'd appreciate it.
Here we go. Can we zoom in or Ryan, maybe walk us through what's defined as the. Can we zoom in or Ryan, maybe walk us through what's defined as the commercial district?
Well, this district is basically is the downtown where downtown commerce is. We try to draw the map to. Keep the commercial people in the map and not the residential because it's the the district is so linear on both Broadway and. Out in Lake Street and then out by the. The target and so forth. So we tried to make sure that we included most of the commercial businesses that we have. That's why the map looks a little. Just a little bit different.
And so the the blue, the blue is.
Blue, the blue map is is the blue line is what would be considered the new commercial business district. And we tried to make it follow what the current, what reflects the current commercial business.
Council, I'll just chime in with my opinion to kind of get this conversation kicked off. You know, we're we're talking about gravel roads and commercial districts together. And if we, you know, we're, we are a commerce hub and. I think, you know, if we want to continue to be a commerce hub, I think that we there's minimum standards we should have as that. And I think, you know, gravel roads don't belong in a commercial district is my personal opinion. And if we are able to change an assessment policy and to encourage some development of those. Gravel roads and improvements of those gravel roads. I I support the change in policy. I I know that there's a lot, a larger consideration as it relates to residential streets. And we need a long term plan to, you know, you know, to address that. But you know, whatever we're able to do to reduce the cost to our, you know, commercial businesses and provide the amenity. That a city should be providing the streets. I would encourage the change in policy.
Ma, if you don't mind. Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
No matter what kind of a street we repair, it's ultimately a public street, no matter what, at the end, at the end of the day. And and I I agree that. We may have to change some policy to help out, make sure that that does get paved and and. Without 100% assessment on it, you know, so because it's still public street, it's still a public improvement for the city of Forest Lake. One man's opinion.
I I don't disagree with that. I I'm concerned it's a little bit of a slippery slope. You know. I mean, I I almost feel like I would like to look at this a little more comprehensively. Rather than, you know, just kind of make a knee jerk decision. I mean, I I completely understand where we're going and I support that. I'm just a little concerned about. You know, going this direction with one and not, not with the other kind of simultaneously. And and I'm not sure if that's unfounded or not. I might need to think this through a little, a little further, but that's just, that's my, kind of where my initial gut goes with this. You know, what what about, what about those, you know, those in industrial properties, for example, as well? You know, the new commercial industrial properties as well, who are going to be assessed at a rate of 100% currently, according to this policy. So. I kind of, I support this idea and concept. I I just, I. I may want to look at it a little more comprehensively.
Council member by storm, just to further understand, when you say support one over the other, one meaning commercial and the other meaning residential. Is that the two buckets that you were referring to?
Well, when I look at the policy, you know, the highlighted section that says new commercial business district. And then right underneath that, construction of new commercial industrial. You know, we're at 20%, proposed 20% one in one place and 100% in another.
And so to inform that, would a map of gravel roads that are outside of this area? Would that be helpful to kind of help inform?
Yeah, I I I don't know that I understand the scope of what it is we're trying to accomplish here. That would help immensely, I think.
Yeah, one of the things that, so I think that that map would be helpful for follow up conversation. And one of the things that has me confident in supporting this is that. The amount of roadway we're talking about is pretty small. And so I feel like it is a place where we can define and start. To your broader point about needing a larger plan, I 100% agree, right? That, you know. You know, 10 year plan that we are building needs to include some thoughtful consideration of how does that expansion look in other areas of the city? I just look at this as we've got a small pocket of identified low hanging fruit that we can be. Of of big impact at a relatively small investment dollar. The the whole, you know, a number of gravel. Dave, I want to say we've got, is it 36 miles of gravel roads? Is that, I don't know if that's the number that's at the top of my head. Whatever that number is, it's a much larger number. And so, you know, that that's going to require a much more robust investment effort and consideration.
Yeah, we're right around 30 miles, 30 miles of gravel roads.
Mayor Bean, where is that second? I made this a question for Patrick. Where is that second road? I know you said Fifth and what was the other one?
I believe there's one out and Ryan or Davey company, I think there's one out west portion that we've identified that's still gravel.
So in the area that you guys saw on the map outlined tonight, there are areas of gravel. Existing gravel roads are obviously Fifth Avenue southwest that we're talking about. And then Ninth Avenue southwest that. Is into 15 Streets where Knife River Concrete Plant, the trucks drive out of. And then there's a very small portion still in public right away on Second Street southwest, south of the Hool property site.
And also to to comment on what Kathy said, there's gravel roads up in Goodview Circle in that industrial park.
Just to clarify, the roads that I didn't mention are the ones that are left in the. Or in the blue box that was highlighted on the map. Once you go outside that map, then yeah, certainly we got a lot of other additional roadways to talk about.
Sure. And that whole property piece may or may not survive, depending what happens to the redevelopment of that piece of property as well.
I would imagine that gets vacated part of that project site redevelopment someday. Also, the one thing to consider, the roads that we, I just mentioned, all have sewer and water to them. Once you get up to, say, Goodview Circle there, the industrial loop, there is no sewer and water there currently. So I mean, you're dealing with a lot of different types of variables. Once you start getting out of this core business area. So that's only going to expand your conversations on what you want to be assessing for improvements. Or what improvements do you want there before you even start talking about road improvements? So. Just a food for thought.
Council, other questions or information, information requests that would be helpful for the next time we talk about this?
Think that map, that broader map would be helpful just to see, be able to visualize it a little bit.
Yeah, so the request is a map of gravel roads throughout the city and where their locations are. That's, I think we've already had that.
We do have that.
That's helpful feedback. And then, you know, when I have looked at this, I've kind of asked the question of. What's the right assessment percentage? And there's some alignment around 20% with other areas of our assessment policy. And absence another data point, you know, some consistency makes sense. Now, that's an easier decision to make if we're talking about changing policy on a relatively small scope. If we were to consider a broader scope, we might need to do the math to do some additional. You know, to arrive at a, you know, a percentage that we're comfortable with. So I I I just want that out there, that part of my foundational support of 20% is really because we're talking about a pretty small scope.
Yeah, and the 20% is consistent with when we talk about reconstruction of streets. That means the street's already been paved. And if we're going to assess for a reconstruction, that's 20% of our policy. But again, not to labor, but all of the gravel roads are at 100% at this point. And whether the council determines that 20% is correct or the 100% needs to change with the other rural or non paved roads. That's a decision and discussion you should have.
I I just, I just don't want this to kind of come back to us in some way, shape or form, right? I, you know, I I I need to better understand the scope, I think. I I just don't want, you know, well, why are they paying 20% and we're paying 100, right? And so I want to better understand what it is we're we're approving or. At least discussing with this point in time. And again, I I don't disagree, you know, we shouldn't have gravel roads. But no.
Yeah, in a perfect world, this would have been, you know, we would have, as that, as those districts developed, we would have. Included minimum municipal standards and, but we didn't in certain pockets. And so to me, this is a bit of catch up and correction of something that should have been done 20 years ago.
So here we are.
We, you know, we're talking about Fifth Avenue. We just did major reconstruction on all of the streets around Fifth Avenue. And we didn't do Fifth Avenue because it's a gravel road. And, you know, so not only have those roads around it been developed, but they've been, you know, they've had significant. You know, we we just did the resurfacing project on the surrounding roads. So it's it's a gap that is going to continue to be there until we're able to make something else happen. Is there anything from, oh, it's, Patrick, just one more question. Dave, is there anything from a public works maintenance on what this means for your team to? You know, have these pockets of gravel roads that need to be maintained outside of where you're typically maintaining gravel roads? Is there some public works impact there or not?
Difference of using equipment. I mean, if you're spell blacktop, you're with a patching machine. And if you're out, if it's a gravel road, then you're out with a grader, skid steer, many, so. Pockets, you know, out in the rural where, you know, 190th, Taro, all that, when it's all gravel, it doesn't really make a difference. That it's gravel, but when you have pockets here and there, you know, blacktop all around it and then a chunk of gravel, you're swapping out. Some equipment to bring another equipment, you know, so that that is one challenge to that. And then obviously snow removal, you don't throw salt on the gravel road. So, you know, you have to always remember which ones are gravel, so you don't throw any salt on it. And it's just different treatment. You have to put chipruck down on those roads instead of salt. So like I said, when you have a bunch of miles of it grouped together, it doesn't really make a difference because you're out there with that one piece of equipment. But pockets here and there, it's really no different than we have a couple of those cul-de-sacs off of 190th that are paved. It's kind of the reverse, you know, everything out there is gravel and then you have two blacktop cul-de-sacs. So just, you know, if you know what you have, it's it is nice to have it all consistent one way or the other. But, you know, definitely the Fifth Avenue having it paved to be a lot nicer, just because everything around it is is blacktop now, so.
Thank you. That's helpful. Patrick, I think I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. So we plan, we will give you a map of the gravel roads, but we plan to bring this back next Monday. Or this coming Monday, I should say, because we need to make some decisions quickly. We're trying to include Fifth Avenue on. This night, this year's paving plan, we have to get the right things from the landowners. Whether they agree to the assessment, if they'll waive the assessment process. That's what was relayed to us from the property owners. We have some design challenges with it going to be a narrow road with parking, how that's going to work. You know, there's been requests for drive ins that just can't happen. So we've got a lot of design challenges that we have to work with. So we're going to ask for a decision hopefully next Monday. And if we get to the, which we are the map that you requested.
I'd like an opportunity to review that ahead of time even, Patrick, rather than having it come out in the packet. Get it ahead of time. It gives us an opportunity to maybe ask some questions ahead of the meeting. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm sure we can get you the map tomorrow.
Excellent. Any more questions on this item? All right, let's move on to the Shoreland Overland District update. Patrick or Donovan?
Yeah, no, I'll start with this. It's our staff's understanding. There's been a request to look at the Shoreland overlay district in the zoning code. And to possibly change it, amend it to to allow what I assume is increased uses. Usage or increased docks based in the lake. We just need some guidance. We don't know where you want to go with this a little bit. We know that the Shoreland Overlay District in our code is a reflection of what the DNR's model ordinance says. And that when it was adopted, it's very close, if not word for word, but very close to the DNR Shoreland Model Ordinance. One of the issues that we're going to have is with the DNR is that. They allow you to be more strict in these things, but usually not more lenient. And part of the review and what you're looking, might be looking at is trying to go more lenient. We've also had to throw in the other part of this is that the boat dock people also are looking to expand. Possibly from their 24 slips to 48 slips. And again, this is a DNR issue where how much do they allow? What's the formula? So before we start to do any of that research or if we go down that road. I I think I wanted to ask the council if you're interested us in starting that that process and doing that research and doing that, those those reporting. Because it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to be some understanding. We'll probably have to get our legal staff involved with this. But we don't want to spin our wheels if you're not interested in doing it. So I just want to make sure if you're interested that we can move forward or not.
I think that's a great way to tee this up because I think personally, I. So I appreciate that this, what we're asking is potentially a fair amount of work. And, you know, the history on where we've, why we have in our code, what we have. And what some of those pros and cons and those impacts would be of a reevaluation. It's just foundational information that I I don't feel like I have a good grasp of. And so I would, I would advocate for maybe a workshop discovery session. On reviewing what we have today and why it's there. And expansion on exactly what you just said, Patrick, of what is rooted in state statute? And what is, what have other communities done successfully to to, if they have deviated from that? What are some of those options look like? I think that would be helpful before we were to just start taking a pretty robust code set and doing, you know, sending Donovan on a mission to do a lot of work. I think it'd be helpful to kind of just review current state before we do anything of evaluating options. You know, there's, there's questions that come up on this routinely and we're asked as council members, well, why is it that way? And a lot of times we don't have a great answer. And so just some foundational understanding, I would appreciate a workshop session before we were to start a bunch of work. I would say though, if there is a request from the, you know, whether it's coming from the boat club. Or whether it's coming from other areas that is a project base that is going to require some evaluation anyway. Then maybe we are in a situation where we do need to open it up more broadly. But if if there's not a, if there's not consensus that we need to open it up, I'd rather start with an education session on current state. That's just my personal opinion and open to feedback.
We can certainly do that. And I think it's a good idea because. And we tie these two issues together, the the Shoreland Overlay District and the Boat Dock, because they're really closely related. And are governed by some of the, some of the statutes and the DNR regulations that we need to. At least we'll try to dig in very lightly before we get too deep into them, just to understand. I mean, we understand how some of this happened, but the real understanding is can we change it or can't we change it? Or if we want to change it, how much work and how much expense and what that entails.
Or what is, what are some of? What are some of the consequences of doing so? And I'll just say, the last thing I want to do is pick a fight with the DNR. Or to create problems in other. or to create problems in other development areas with the DNR. And so, but that's, those are things that I could use some, you know, more discussion around and education just to better understand costs of some of the alternatives that some community members might promote from time to time or a development opportunity will promote from time to time.
And we'll try to explain the impact on, on the possibility of the number of boats or number of slips or number of docks. What do you want to call them on the lake and how that affects lake health and boat traffic? And we'll try to start a little bit of that. We won't have a full explanation. But, you know, if you're looking to relax these, eventually, if you relax these standards, that's going to change the, the ratio of boats on the lake at this point. So we have to look at that a bit.
Well, I think we have a secondary issue in that we have, it is, it sounds, based on some of the discussion we've had at our council meetings, that we potentially have a lot of, of entities out there that are not in compliance either. And so it, it's difficult to make an argument to somebody who's saying, can I have two more boat slips? When somebody else is, is kind of out of compliance. So we've, we've got to get all of that under control, I think.
Or grandfathered, some of that might be grandfathered.
Right. We've got, but we've got to understand it, I think. So I, I fully support kind of the education side of this first, and then just seeing where it takes us.
I support that as well, the workshop.
Yeah. We have, we have to work in, you know, within the DNR rules. This has been a problem all along. And I agree with Patrick to, to try to loosen up the rules. This just isn't going to work. So we need to, we need to pin those down and, and kind of go from there. I'd appreciate the workshop too. Thanks.
Yeah, I think the workshop would be extremely beneficial.
Well, we can start working on that and try to schedule it for later in the year here. It may take a few weeks to gather this up and get opinions, but we'll start working on this and return to the council when we're prepared to present something.
I'm, I'm very intrigued by the lake health idea or issue as well, you know, is there, is there data out there on, you know, lake square footage and, you know, an appropriate number of boats within that, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm really interested in whatever you can find on that.
Yeah, we will try, we'll try to kind of explain what the model ordinance and what the city forest lake pass, because there's a ratio that the DNR set about the number of docks versus, I believe it's Shoreline footage and things like that. And obviously, it, you know, it's real apparent that the more boats, the, the more threat there is to the health of the lake because of pollution and gas. And but we'll try to wrap that up a little bit with this as well. That may be a little bit outside of what we can find, but we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Donovan, do you have kind of general understanding of what council is looking for? Any questions? Or if we're, we're having this as a workshop topic, are there other things you would put on the list?
No, I think, I think you're looking at some good parameters for discussion. I mean, I'd like to dig a little deeper into it and have some more discussions with our local DNR staffer as to what other communities have done. I mean, I think a lot of it really has been set, you know, by the, by the model ordinance and the city, you know, looking back at the record in 1999 when it was adopted. You know, the city wasn't really willing to adopt all those standards. So I think the ones that are adopted, you know, were pretty much what the city was required to. But we can get some more clarification on that and if, you know, what things potentially can be relaxed or, you know, what, what's the, what's the state of art as far as what other communities are doing? And, you know, we also did have a, you know, brief conversation with Pete around this as well, just to kind of help us get informed on kind of the state statute part of it. You know, Pat was, was, you know, really correct saying, yes, we can, you know, if it's state statute, we can be stricter, but they're not, there's really no way to be more lenient.
Yeah.
Well, I should say there's, there are a couple of ways, but it's
Maybe not advised.
They're not, yeah, they're not nice.
Against the law.
Well, no, no, I mean, special, a special plan or saying that we have special exceptions to, you know, invoke new rules.
Yeah.
I think those are really difficult.
And we really don't have much option of special rules or special conditions that you govern that. We've kind of been over that. So that's really not in the game. So, but we'll review it and see what we can find and get it back to you.
Good. Council, any further, any further discussion or requests on this topic as it comes back up for workshop? All right. That is the plan, the end of our planned agenda for this evening. Anybody have anything further for tonight? All right. Great discussion as always. Enjoy the rest of your week. Look forward to seeing you on Monday. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second. A motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Munson. Karen, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Or Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bean?
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.